Okay, call the city council meeting to order for Monday, July 23, 2018. And closed session, there was no reportable action, but we will continue after the regular meeting, and let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Can we do roll call?
Oh, we do roll call, oh, do we do it now too? Oh, okay, so roll call.
Could you set the microphone closer?
There we go. So, roll call.
Mayor Collendorf is absent. Vice Mayor Herman?
Here present.
Councilmember Bee Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Matildee is absent. Councilmember Olivera?
Here.
We have a forum.
So, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? I think there was something that was going to be, go ahead.
Item B on the consent agenda will need to be moved to the regular agenda.
As opposed to just calling it out?
It's a continuance of the public hearing that we were having on the, uh...
And is that the only change that we're making?
We'll have to move to 5D.
It's going to be at 5A, I think.
And then move everything else down?
Sure, doesn't matter to me as long as it gets addressed.
I've moved it to 5A, so.
Very good.
Good, okay, so, now approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then, we have public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay, see no public comment. Do we have anything that needs to the public or the council, or any removal of anything from the consent agenda before we approve it?
I'd like to move item 4E. Or pull, I'm sorry, pull, pull item 4E.
I'll move we approve items A, C, and D.
I'd like to move C for a brief discussion.
Okay, move of C for a discussion.
I'll move A and D.
Okay, all right, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, C staff would, um...
So, we're sticking it up with C. Question was, is there a backlog of funds owed to City Now relative to this issue?
There's not a backlog of funds currently, but in the past, we have had a backlog of up to as much as $26,000 before a public hearing in which the project got denied, and obviously their incentive to pay their outstanding balance goes away.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
So, motion to move approval for consent item C?
So, move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, we're going to now go to 5A.
I think we're going to E, somebody pulled E.
We're going to E.
Oh, pulling A, oh, we do that now? Okay.
I just wanted to make the council aware that exhibit B and the agenda item 4E has been replaced. You have a new copy available for you, and there's also copies available of the correct version of the exhibit for the public if you're interested. This includes all of the positions with, within the fire department and the recently negotiated pay ranges for those positions. Obviously, not all the positions have been approved or recommended in the final budget. Staff is aware, and their position control within the budget does reflect what was discussed amongst fire committee, but ultimately, these are the rates as discussed within the fire committee and recommended in the budget. So, that is the amended exhibit B for your consideration. I recommend adoption of resolution 18-33, unless there's further questions. Oh, 37.
37, yes, wondering.
Since you pulled it, there's a typo on the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
The word letter is misspelled in the fourth paragraph.
Thank you.
So, there's wanting to be a motion for adoption of resolution 1837?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're starting with 5A is now approval of resolution 1833. May I understand that? That's approving the engineer's report. It's been moved to 5A. So, staff?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, the item for your consideration tonight is a resolution approving the engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessment and directing the auditor of Calvares County to continue and collect assessments for the fiscal year 2018-19 for the landscape and lighting district number one in Greenhorn Creek. The engineer's report has been available for review since March 6th, since the March 6th meeting, and no comments have been received, so if there's no comments tonight, then it can be determined that the engineer's report and assessment are acceptable. Therefore, the council can act by approving the attached resolution, tonight's resolution which you're considering, which will approve the engineer's report diagram and assessment. This approval is recommended by staff.
Yeah, so, then should I go ahead and open the public hearing? Is that right? Okay, so then, thank you, Dave, open the public hearing? See if there's any comment from the public? No public hearing, okay, I close the public hearing. And any discussion by council?
Senator.
No, so...
I'll move that we approve resolution 1833, a resolution approving the engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment of the directing auditor of Calvares County to continue and collect assessments for the fiscal year 2018-19 for the landscape and lighting district number one, Greenhorn Creek.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It carries. Let's see, the next one is public hearing for adoption of ordinance number 484, so staff.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this is basically a cleanup and an interim ordinance. On his way out the door, Mr. Hanum said, "Oh, by the way, we need a clarification on table 1734-080, so that people do not get confused as to when what he had called a permitted use did in fact actually require a site plan review." So, right now, we have an internal inconsistency in the plan in our ordinance code, and this is a temporary measure to reconcile that so that we do not confuse developers when they come in and want to know what type of entitlement they need to receive. And that's all I had on that. Any questions?
Any questions?
Senator.
Yeah, I have a question. When we devised that table, the purpose was to make it easier for development to occur. It was to make it easier for people to say, "Oh, great, this retail's a permitted, it's a permitted project despite the fact that it hasn't been, you know, a retail store for over a year."
Mm-hmm.
And so, that was the whole purpose was to do this. Now, it looks like what we're doing is we're going back and requiring site plan reviews where the intent was to simplify things, it looks like we're making more complicated.
We actually are retaining the simplification part. The intent of the table was for existing buildings on lots that had already been developed, and that was not clarified, as opposed to bringing in something brand new on a vacant lot. So, whereas it is simplified under 1734-080, if you've got an existing building and you want to change use from A to B, you're good. If it's a vacant parcel and you want to bring in something brand new, under our ordinance in several portions, it requires site plan review, and the understanding for this table was that it would still require a site plan review.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Senator.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing then, thank you, Amy. Public hearing is open.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Debbie Poncy with Destination Angels Camp, and we're in support of this ordinance 484. We had a chance to review it during the planning commission process, and do find it a bit easier for development to come in into an existing building and have some sort of framework to work in, so it doesn't have to go through a lot of site plan review and some perhaps unnecessary expenses. So, without any further comment, we're in support of this, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, then, just thinking, am I supposed to hammer this little guy?
Sure.
I close the public hearing? Okay, and now, any, any other comments or from the council?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance, amend ordinance 484 as proposed.
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Three council members, two absent, no, just zero? Okay, good.
And I just wanted to clarify, and we do ask that you set August 7, 2018 hearing date for a second public hearing. This was to waive the first reading of the ordinance, introduce it, hold our public hearing, we need to hold our second meeting August 7, 2018, and then we will be able to publish it and adopt it.
Does that need to be included in the motion, or?
Do I need to amend my motion then, is that?
Yeah, do we need...
Amend the motion to introduce for first reading.
So, amended.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Amy.
All right, then, we're going to 5, which is now 5C, and it is adoption of resolution 1834. And, with staff, let's see, that's what Mike and Emily?
Counsel, vice mayor. Emily, you're on.
So, we are recommending that council approve this...
You put the mic...
Sorry. So, we are recommending that you approve the revisions. We did have a couple last minute changes, I guess that's on this one, I'm sorry. So, we recommend that you approve the revisions in the attachment. It's titled, "Summary of Revisions to the Draft Budget," and so these are revisions that, that are added to the draft budget that was presented in the June meeting. And then, we also recommend the adoption of the fiscal year budget, which is resolution 18-34. And please see the revised attachments that Mike's handing out.
Were there any last minute changes due to the departure of a key employee and possible ramifications of that?
Yes, so, in terms of the police department's budget, we did receive a resignation from one of the police officers working for Angels PD. The budget as proposed provides for two PO1s to go to the academy. It's my understanding that Chief Fordal recommends that two PO1s be offered employment and be sent to the academy. He has a deadline quickly approaching. Basically, with your decision today, he will call the academy and have those officers enrolled. So, my advice to the council was that we don't have the capacity long term or strategy necessarily to sustain those positions long term as of yet, but the chief is in the position that he needs the vacancies filled. He's facing some requests for time off that make juggling personnel and keeping officers on the street difficult. I think that these are all the issues that he's communicated and expressed with you over the past few years that these cuts have taken place. So, now, the budget does afford for those two PO1s, it does afford for the school resource officer, and aside from the school resource officer, it will bring his police officer staffing to six, if that's what's supported by the council. It is what is recommended by our police chief. We have budgeted the $10,000 to the academy, and then I would like direction to work with legal counsel to explore the potential to draft contracts should you send two officers to the academy that identify a minimum length of service that they would provide the city for that partnership and that opportunity. But as I mentioned, we're in a moment in time where we're studying our organizational review, we're looking at sustainability long term, and so, that's, that's the debate, and it's no surprise. But the budget with that vacant position now can afford those two positions.
And then, what about the other key person, key employee that we just lost? Museum director?
Oh, yes.
So, how's that affecting our budget? I notice we still have a full, the $142,000 budget for the museum, and I'm wondering if we can't back that off by a significant portion and perhaps slide some of that money over to, you know, another, I don't know what we're going to do with that position yet, but clearly, not having that full-time employee is going to create some cost savings over the next few months anyway, until we figure it out.
Correct, so...
So, is that indicated in this budget anywhere?
It is not indicated in this budget, this budget was developed prior to that information. We did recommend the cut of $24,000 additional to the museum, that is in this budget, and so then, I hope to seek council's direction on a staffing strategy in the near future. At that point, I'd like to work with the commission on that strategy, and then also bring back to a revised budget. But please know the salary savings associated with the vacancy of that position has not been accounted for in the bottom line figures you're looking at today.
So, what I'd like to propose is that we remove a significant portion from the museum budget and put it in a line item for a future solution to that issue. I know we might combine that, that position with another position, maybe in the planning department was one idea, but maybe have a line item aside, takes it out of the museum budget and puts on the side for the solution, so that the museum doesn't think that they got all this money to burn now because we're not spending it on that employee.
We can remove that from the budget as directed today, the salaries and benefits of that full-time position.
Yes.
We can remove that as directed if that's the direction of the council, and then we can bring back to any amendments to the budget based on strategy developed with this council and the commission for filling the vacancy or maintaining current staffing levels. The recommendation from the commission is that we maintain at least part-time staffing levels of three people per day, so that they could provide adequate oversight and security of the exhibits, and then I hope to bring back that discussion to you at a future time.
So, that three people per day would cut into the savings, are we...
Potentially. I think what I would be interested, and if it's okay, can I, now that this item is of discussion, can I make a recommendation for the staffing and how it may potentially impact the budget?
Directly with relation to the budget.
Okay, so, I think my recommendation would be to consider an internal promotional opportunity to a program coordinator, still a part-time position, but the current position is at $11 an hour budgeted, it would go to $1,575, and then fill the current vacant part-time position, bringing that number to six, so that we could provide for day-to-day operations, still have the educational component and the educational coordinator overseeing the exhibits and the lectures and things of that nature, but having enough dedicated staff then to man the exhibits and the buildings. I think short term, that's my recommendation. The added cost would be the $12,000, I believe, to add back a part-time position, still substantial savings to the museum budget, and then whatever the difference is in reclassifying a current museum clerk to a museum coordinator, the difference being approximately $11 an hour to $1,575 per hour.
And tell them to go full-time with that?
No, they would all be part-time, less than the 936 hours, so they would be exempt...
960.
Oh, 960.
So, the difference between a full-time higher-paid position and a part-time lower-paid position?
It will be very minimal. Right now, we are looking at...
It shouldn't be minimal.
Oh, oh, the, the impact of the part-time. Right now, total full-time compensation of a museum director is $117,000. A museum coordinator is $16,440, and another part-time museum clerk is $12,000. So, my recommendation is to reclassify one of those clerks to a coordinator, so you'll have the difference between the 12 and the 16.
So, is that a savings, if my math is right, a savings of about $88,000?
More than that.
I'll trust your math.
You've got $17,000 for the one and $12,000 for the others, $29,000 cost versus 117?
That's my short-term recommendation.
So, we can move $88,000 from the budget?
I would support that.
Would you?
Okay.
The only thing that I might clarify is in communications with museum staff, they do have concern with the budget, where we've identified materials and supplies at $700, so they would like to see that go up. I believe in prior years, it was $7,000, which they've expended that amount regularly on an annual basis, but materials and supplies at $750, staff felt that that was unmanageable, and they'd like to see that amount go up.
What are the materials and supplies we're talking about?
It could be toilet paper, paper towels, brochures. They pointed out the cash register machine, tape, coffee paper, toner, pretty much anything needed to run the office.
Wasn't the $750 number proposed by the museum director?
It was.
So, why, there had to be a logic, some logic in cutting that so drastically, what was the, was, is there overstock on those items now, or what was the logic in that?
I don't know.
There was urging on Melissa's part.
It was what?
There was urging on Melissa's part.
To lower...
There was urging on Melissa's part to cut the budget a little bit.
So, she cut where she could, she cut $750.
So, but existing staff is saying that's not enough?
Existing staff is saying that they feel like it needs to be more.
And what's the number?
Yeah.
It was $7,000 in prior years.
But what are they asking for?
They weren't asking anything specific, so I think this is where I would like to work with the commission, and then to work with staff that gets potentially reclassified within the position, and work with them to bring back a budget amendment. But I think at this point, I would support the cut of the $88,000 with the, with the idea that we might be coming back to talk about that item.
Isn't any reason that couldn't be amended six weeks down the road?
Absolutely, three months down the road.
So, what I'd like to see is have you work with the commission to determine the path forward first.
Can you get close to your microphone?
I'd recommend you work with the commission first to determine the path forward, and then come back, and we amend the budget based on the outcome of that discussion.
Okay.
To take the $88,000 now predetermines the outcome in my mind about how this would go without commission input, and I, and I think you should have commission input.
Well, the other side is I'm kind of excited about the prospect of being able to run that museum full-time for $88,000 less, that might just save the museum, because we're going from a real big number to a still big number, and how much that museum costs us to run all year. So, if we can slash that 88, even if that's, if Melissa's suggestion to promote the part-time or add a new part-time to that, if that works, that's a solution in my mind, a long-term solution. And if we come up with something better than that, to me, better means less money. So, I think if that's the worst-case scenario, that's a good one, I'm all for moving the 88 over. I might move 85 over and give them, you know, a few more rolls of paper or whatever, but...
That's okay, I understand your thinking, it's my, it's just my contention that it's a predetermined outcome if you do that.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see the commission have legitimate input to the process, that's why they're there.
Yeah, I favor the commission also, having an input into it before of doing it now.
Adjust later.
My problem with that is we have, we have police officers' budgets slashed to none, we have parks and wrecks or public works that are slashed, we have essential services that we're slashing, so maybe we can come up with a little more expensive way to handle a museum. If there's a solution here and it saves us $88,000, I think we need to jump on it now while we can, and maybe we can bolster our essential services a little bit. To me, it makes no sense into giving an extra dollar to that museum when we're cutting essential services, and this is an opportunity to get it clean, have them work within a budget. If they're having a hard time, they come up with an idea that they can make the museum more sufficient, self-sufficient, then, then we can hear a budget proposal at that time. I'd like to see it go that way, I'd like to see them come and ask us for money versus us coming in and saying, you know, they say, "Oh, we saved you $50,000," well, not really, it costs us 38 in my mind. I really think it's important that we show where our priorities are, and I think our priorities need to be in essential services, especially when we can still have a museum running and open as many days as it is, we have a solution at hand that, to me, is very tenable. I think it's a shame to let this go, and what kind of statement would that present to the city?
Do you have any more to say?
No, only that the commission is there to have input on this, and it's a predetermined outcome, so, I'm not changing my position on it, I think that's the correct process.
Well, a little background on the commission too, when it was established, it was established back to help make the museum self-sufficient, to slowly have museum each year incrementally take its way out of a hole or become self, self-sufficient, basically, and it hasn't happened. So, the commission is there, and the commission's running the museum, and they're doing a good job. Museum looks great, it's, it's growing in its, its exhibits, but it's not making any more money, it's costing us more and more money every year, until now, we have to, you know, got to over $180,000 last year, we're asking it to come in $160 something, and it's a big, it's a big to-do.
Okay, so, I need to open a public hearing, so if there's anything more...
Oh, I think that, I think that there is probably more, and then...
See if there's more that, why do they sit here?
If I, if I might, in terms of the museum and the commission, the commission did take an opportunity to express to me that they would like the council to know that their participation in the decisions moving forward would be very much appreciated. So, they did express that as a desire at their commission meeting to be included in these types of budget decisions. So, I think they are aware of the cut of the $24,000 that has been discussed thus far. The staffing changes were new information, they've also been asked to be included in the discussion as to what the interim solutions are and what the long-term solutions are. So, if, if okay with the council, I would like to go back to the commission, let them know the discussion that we've had here, let them know that there is a recommendation for further cuts to offset the elimination of that position, and have a conversation about a staffing strategy that they could support, and then also a budget that they could support, and I could bring that back as an amendment to this budget at a future date.
I'm going to stick to my guns on this, we'll have a motion, we can vote whenever we vote, but I'd like to hear from the public on this, and I'd like to see where we go.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I also represented the council's, or I'm sorry, the commission's discussion at their, their previous meeting.
Are we going to public comment on an item-by-item basis, or are we going to hear the rest of the finance presentation?
Yeah, so I was wondering too.
However you want to do it. Should we just go on ahead?
I think you should go on ahead, and then we'll open a public hearing which would include both.
So, the council directed adjustments, the first one was about increasing the TOT revenue by $50,000, so you directed a $30,000 increase to the general fund, and to do that, because of the allocations, we increased it by $50,000, and then the remaining $20,000 is allocated between emergency services, tourism, and roads. And so, there's a total budgeted TOT of $1,125,000, and so it's up $56,000 from the prior year. The next item directed was to remove the AB 109 grant revenue, and then, so for the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, we, in lieu of providing the support of $6,500, we are going to have in-kind services from the city, and so there's a list of those in one of the attachments that has the, the services and a breakdown of the waivers, the fee waivers that the City of Angels would offer to the Angels Camp Business Association. And so we already discussed the museum decrease. We did already decrease twenty-four thousand, and I guess we'll go, we'll defer to what you discussed earlier on that. We did increase the Destination Angels Camp support by five thousand, and this was in part to compensate for the decrease in ACBA. We reassigned the sales tax consultant costs. This didn't have any financial impact. We did add a police vehicle. This was gonna be from, our police impact fees. And then next, we did an addition for planning and building to hire a consultant, and we, we will get some support from the developer, and so the only effect on the budget is forty thousand dollars. And then there's some, a software update for planning and building. They needed a new fee calculation software. This should have a positive impact in the future. And a technology upgrade for, for everyone across the board, which is for computers that are much needed. And we discussed the police recruitment costs of twenty thousand dollars. And then there was a transfer that had no, no financial impact, and then, and then we recommend an employee vacation payout before they get too large. It's, it's something that we will have to discuss in future budgets, just to keep those at a, at a minimal, and we don't have to write huge checks at the end of the year. So there's a, a summary just showing all those adjustments, starting with the numbers that we presented in the June meeting, and then your bottom line, and then the other summary shows you the ending amounts to all the funds.
Uh, questions?
Questions? Go ahead.
Item eleven on the police recruiting with the signing bonus. What's the relationship between this versus putting two people in the academy?
Well, I think at, at the time that we were establishing this, this item, it was either or. It was either going to be recruitment fees or signing bonuses.
Is the cost gonna-
You're not being recorded.
My goodness.
Thank you.
Can't have that. The recruitment, I'm sorry, the twenty thousand dollars when it was set, was set to be either, either the signing bonuses or the-
The thinking on the signing bonuses was that you could get a qualified party to join the department.
Yeah, the, the chief's preference is to have these recruits go to the academy, and as Melissa said earlier, have them sign an agreement that says, we will continue with the police force for three years as a payback for the academy.
How does that affect this line item? Was, was the recruiting, signing bonus, was the signing bonus more than the, the expense to put them through the academy?
It's about the same.
It's a wash? Okay, all right, got it.
And I think Chief Fordle was wanting to be responsive to sort of council discussions, which was, if we could potentially get someone with a sign-on bonus, but the chief's recommendation is not that we go that route. In his previous recruitments, they were not successful, so his recommendation to the council, unless directed otherwise, he would prefer two recruits through the academy as his preferential.
And since the dollar's basically the same thing, that's really not an issue. I think that's an issue we defer to Chief Fordle.
Yep, they're the exact same.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, I'm good.
So, and if I might clarify, Mike, with the resignation within the police officers, police department, we have capacity for two PO ones to go to the academy. So my initial recommendation, at the time we released the draft budget, was not to recommend two positions. It was to recommend one. The chief, however, supports the two PO ones going through the academy. We've identified the recruitment cost, or the academy costs for those POs. Given the recent resignation, they can be accommodated within the existing budget. So I just wanna caution the council that as we make these changes, that we'll need to afford the positions long-term. But as long as you are aware of that, we do have the two positions afforded within this current budget. And the chief would like direction to send them to the academy, so that he could get them registered immediately. The academy begins in August.
So there is somebody in queue for this?
He does have two applicants in queue that he would like to send as soon as possible.
So walk me through the math again. With the resignation, were the chief plus five officers today?
So with the resignation, and anybody from PD that wants to help out, let's see.
Chief plus four?
Yes, chief plus four today.
Chief plus four today.
Chief plus four, we have five, with the resignation of the current officer. And so he is recommending replacing the recent resignation, sending in the PO one, the PO ones. And then also now, we have a school resource officer that will be funded one hundred percent by Bradhart High School. So that won't be an officer that's able to assist the city with our workload, but still will provide some relief in terms of if his response or her response to the high school.
Is that in addition to the five?
That's in addition to the five. And recruitment will begin for school resource officer soon, but we, and our hope, chief is hopeful, get the school resource officer in September.
And then we'll be replacing our chief in just a few months?
Correct.
Okay. Now, with the, with the long-term employee leaving, is there a large payout, vacation time, paid time off, that kind of stuff?
Great question.
Because it usually seems like that's a big number.
We will be researching that. It's breaking news, so that's a great question.
What's a, Mike, do you know the ballpark, based on past, we've lost some key employees in the last few, last few years, so is, is fifty thousand a number that we can throw around, or twenty thousand?
That's, that's been, I know that we set up some payout, not anticipating this, but it's just a standard practice of about five thousand dollars, which will not cover a payout if, in fact, he hasn't used his vacation. And off the top of my head, I can't tell you, stand over close, Mike. I can't tell you, but we will find that out for you, and we'll email you the answer.
So we're trying to pass a budget tonight. We're looking at fund reserves, and I'm trying to get a reasonable number to use to, toward that.
Forty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, then I'm gonna open the public hearing. All right. Public hearing is now open.
Anne, Anne Forrest, fifteen forty-five Tryon Road, and I'm speaking as a member of the Museum Commission, since it was reformed in two thousand and seven. There is nothing in the city ordinance that delineates the responsibilities of the Museum Commission that says that the Museum Commission's task is to make the museum self-sufficient. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
Any other public comment?
Yes, I have several. In regards to the museum, I, I understand where Councilmember Beal's coming from, but I support Councilmember Olivera's recommendation. I think there's been a lot of miscommunication and maybe perhaps misdirection between the foundation's role, the commission's role, the city council's role, and museum director and staff. And I think this is a good opportunity. I know Melissa's had one meeting with the commission, and we'll move quickly on this, to meet again, to determine and take a look at the bigger picture now that there's a formal resignation, and perhaps some cost savings and reconfiguring in the budget. I think the, just a lot of misinformation from an outsider looking in, and I would hate for such a drastic move to be made tonight in not giving the commission an opportunity to step up and come to the plate like they so much want to. And I think, I'm not gonna go into past, but I think there's been a lot of misinformation and miscommunication in the past. So this is a good opportunity, I think, to start on the right foot and bring the commission into the fold. And they are your arms and ears. That's why they were set up, and I don't think they've been used efficiently or effectively, and this is a good chance to do that at this point. As I looked at my notes on item in regards to ACBA's support, initially, the Mark Twain Wild West Fest was a part of the Commemorative Committee for the City of Angels, which was under the auspices of the Angels Camp Business Association. Last year, I know when the TOT monies of twenty-five thousand dollars was renegotiated and kept within the city, it was my understanding that there was a tourism-related monies collected, and it needed to stay with tourism. And a part of that was why a good chunk of that eleven-five went to the Mark Twain Wild West Fest. This year, when we took a look at it, it was a, taken and looked at that eleven-five and determined that Destination Angels Camp, as part of tourism development, would have five thousand. And my notes indicated that there was support of keeping the sixty-five hundred with the Wild West Fest and through ACBA. ACBA, in turn, also asked for a waiver of fees. I don't know if the total nine thousand dollars of the fee structure there, but my recollection and notes indicated it was up to nine thousand dollars in fees waivers, which included a waiving of fees for hanging banners and park-related fees, using the kitchen, stuff like that, plus the sixty-five hundred dollars that was for the Wild West Fest. So I would just like some clarification there on that particular item. It's my understanding as well that for Destination Angels Camp, on item number six, our Board of Directors met to discuss the impacts of the Angels City budget and how that relates to Destination Angels Camp. And we understand that there was this discussion of how Destination Angels Camp might be able to help off or help inform and educate the public on the sales tax initiative, and our board is supportive in doing that as being an education and information arm in regards to the sales tax initiative, reaching out to residents and businesses, voters, et cetera, on this particular issue. We feel that, basically, Destination Angels Camp is the private, private-public partnership with the City of Angels, and our, our goal, our mission, our vision is, is in conjunction with the city. And the city's understanding right now, one of their top priority projects is the sales tax initiative, and Destination Angels Camp and the Board of Directors supports that. So we will do what we can to support that initiative moving forward. Are there any questions or comments on my, any?
Nope.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thanks, Debbie. Any other public comment? We'll close the public hearing, and now back to council. We have before us the, actually, resolution with the budget, accepting the budget, eighteen dash thirty-four. Also in that, though, we have been discussing the museum money, and so any, any kind of motion would have to, I guess, include something along those lines, would be my understanding, something to deal with the museum as well.
There was a further amendment proposed, correct?
Yeah, okay. But we haven't had a, a motion yet.
Yeah, I'd like some clarification on item number five. It says increase the Destination Angels Camp support by five thousand. To Debbie's point earlier, we had, we had made that number twenty-five thousand, but, but allowed nothing for the city to hire a consultant to push the sales tax. So is, how's that?
So it's my understanding that, if I remember correctly, in community support, we decreased the support for the Mark Twain Wild West states. And so that increased in community support, the contribution to DAC to twenty-five as budgeted. I think the goal was to get them to their fifty-five thousand dollar mark, which was proposed in their budget for a full-time coordinator. We had twenty thousand identified for the consultant for the sales tax initiative. That shifted, and then council directed an additional five thousand dollars to make it a total of fifty-five thousand dollars to Destination Angels Camp.
So the twenty thousand dollar shift has already happened. That's not-
It's revenue, it's cost neutral, because it was in the general-
That's not, I just wanna make sure that we're not, there's no one getting short-changed there. And then, just a comment, years ago, probably, well, it was probably four, five, three, four years ago, anyway, I went online, I tried to research, what, what's a proper reserve for a city our size to maintain its general fund? And at the time, the number was eight hundred thousand dollars, based on, was kind of a minimum, based on the, the size of our budget. Our budget has grown, and if we take forty thousand for the gentleman who just resigned off of here, we're down to six eighty-five, and we have the load hotel that we have to deal with, front some cash for. Our reserves are getting way below what's, what's, and, and Mike, or, you know, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if, we're getting to a point that's not real safe and not real prudent. And so that's one reason that if we have an opportunity to take some money out of museum budget now, assume that we're gonna find a solution that isn't gonna eat up all our eighty-five thousand, take something now, put it back into the general fund, keep your reserves closer to the eight hundred thousand or even seven, seven fifty, that'd be, I think, prudent.
Yeah, the level of our reserves is dependent on two things. Number one, what this budget ends up being adopted for, and what the end of the year turns out to be. We, the budget has been amended to the point where that nine hundred thousand dollar reserve is two hundred thousand dollars less than the reserve that was in the financial statements. If that turns out to be neutral, then your reserve will be nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, I think, is the number, minus whatever the deficit is in the budget. If we're going to adopt a budget with an eight thousand, eight hundred, eighty thousand dollar reduction based on the museum readjustment, then you will be, you'll end up theoretically better than you are, better than you were beginning this fiscal year, this last fiscal year. So I, I think that it'll clearly be better than six hundred thousand dollars. Whether it'll be nine hundred thousand dollars or eight, I can't say.
Do you have an opinion as to what is a prudent for, for your reserves? Is it dangerous dropping below eight? Is it, you know, it's four hundred thousand, do you have an opinion as to that number?
My opinion would be, if you had a million dollars, it would be very comfortable. If you had nine hundred thousand dollars, somewhere between a, a million dollars and seven hundred thousand dollars, it's getting squeaky when you get to the, to the seven hundred thousand dollar level.
Okay.
Mike, is it true that the reserve prior to the recession was somewhere close to five million dollars?
I don't know that.
No, it's not true.
Not five million. I believe close to three point four million at the time. And if I remember correctly, the, the thought process was that the city had a year's worth of operating revenue in their unrestricted fund balance prior to the recession. I believe it was between three and four million.
Yeah, so without the financial expertise that you have, I think we should collectively be building back towards something in the range of two to three million in the reserves over time. I'm not saying we cut slash and try to do that now. I'm just saying, as opportunities present themselves, you know, we should move that. Doesn't mean I'm backing off the commission involvement in the thing for the eighty-five thousand. It just means that as a long-term strategy, watching what happened in that recession and chewing through that money over time, you know, a million bucks doesn't sound like much.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And it's not a question of if. It's a question of when.
You mean a recession, it's when, yes.
So I think we should be conscious of that going down the road, that sales tax initiative aside, it's just not, you know, spend the money. It's also build a reserve, so. Just a little insight of how I'm thinking about it.
All right. Okay, any more questions on that?
And my, my idea isn't to take power away from the commission or take any tasks away from the commission. In fact, it's the opposite. In fact, it's the opposite. My suggestion would be to task the commission with coming up with a better solution than what you just, Melissa, you just brought up. Task the commission to come up with something better and bring it back to the council to see about funding. You know, we're, we've just, we've demonstrated that, you know, it's frustrating going off of last year's budgets and set of actuels because we don't know within $200,000 how much money we have. But clearly we're below a million, we're likely below 900,000, we're likely to fall probably below it, you know, push the 800,000.
I, go ahead.
No, I, I think that we need to look at the overall picture and we can't afford, if we have a solution that keeps the museum open the same number of hours and we can do it for 85,000 less than we're doing it now, I think it's a no-brainer.
Okay, well.
We can defend that all day long and we're not hurting anything. If the commission comes up with a better idea, and I'm sure they're going to look at and they're asked to look at and tasked, and probably like never before asked to actually consider budgets, then I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, well, thank you for your recommendations. And so I think now what we need to do is have a motion that would include an amendment in there concerning the museum. So do we have a motion? I think we're done.
Is that the only thing that's, we're talking about amending here? Was that potential for that?
I'm sorry.
I think so. Was that the only, was that the only thing we needed to amend in our motion? We did talk about the 20,000 for DAC and those, but we've already included that. Is there anything else?
Again, if I may propose, Councilman Beal, I could take this discussion back to the commission. I could let them know of the discussion to, to explore further cuts in that amount to the budget. I'd like to get their direction with your support to talk about the staffing and then bring back to you a budget that they have participated in that also addresses your concerns for the, the current resignation and elimination or vacancy in the museum director position.
Can we perhaps find a compromise in that we, we do exactly that and put a budget, instead of taking 88,000 off the table, we take say 60,000 off the table? And say you've got a solution plus 28,000, or come up with an idea that would justify use of that 28,000. I don't want to leave all 88,000 on the table. When I'm looking at this, $9,000 for a planning and building software upgrade, do we really need it?
So.
You know, I mean, I'm sure we would like it. And then I'm looking at additional technology upgrade of 11,500, what happens if we don't get that this year? Do we really need it and to that extent? I mean, we're, we're cutting police officers, people.
So I, I think that from the discussion that we had with the commission is that they recognize the council has difficult decisions to make. They recognize that you are in a position of having to identify priorities and cut. And so their only suggestion to me was that I relay to you their willingness to be part of the solution and to participate in the development where they can.
So can I ask, if I can ask, Melissa, what you're saying is that we wouldn't include an amendment, we would just pass the budget as is, and then you would come back after you've talked to, to the commission, is that what you're saying? And we'll not say anything about the museum at this point in the motion?
I think that they are respectful of the situation that the city council's in in terms of our budget constraints. I think that we can make them aware of the concerns that have been expressed and that there's a desire for additional cuts given recent staffing changes and ask for their participation in a budget. That brings to you a solution that you are supportive of. And I think their end goal is just to participate in this with you.
I understand, I'm not discouraging that at all. What I know, what I know though, is that no government ever in history has come back and said, oh, here's some money back. If we take the budget and, and we minimize the budget, then they'll have to come to us and justify why whatever their proposal is, is better than what you've got, what you just laid out. And maybe show what you just laid out maybe isn't, isn't doable, I don't know, but they'll have to justify going forward at that expense. And I think I would rather put that onus on them to justify it than, you know, give them an 88,000 leash.
You could make a motion to that if you wish and see where it goes.
Okay, well, well, a lot of this depends, again, it's, I don't want to vote for new software and new, new technology, $20,000 unless I know some of that money's there. And we're, we're at 600, based on this number, we're ending up at a reserve of 725,000 minus about a $40,000 payout to an employee. So it's 685. By anybody's, by anybody's opinion, that's too low.
Yeah, well, I mean, either you make a motion or maybe Joe would want to make a motion, we should probably move along.
So, so the deficit is projected at 13,000 in this scenario?
Thirty, 33,000.
Thirty-three.
Where is the number? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, 33.
In the general fund, yeah, 33,000. So, and plus the 40,000 that's going to the payout employee, that's $73,000.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Okay. My move, we accept the budget as is, the caveat that we involve the commission in this decision. And involve the commission in the decision, they're not the budget, they don't decide the budget, we do with your assistance. But, you know, it'd be presented in the form of a challenge as Scott says, but leave the number the way it is.
So you understand that, yes, okay, all right. Do we have a second?
So you're, so you're including the technology and the software and everything else as is and you're leaving, we're going to pass a 685,000 reserve budget?
Yes.
Do we have a second? I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Pose.
No.
Carrie's. So according to how it was stated by?
Clear on all of that?
As Joe stated it. All right, we're moving on. Okay, so the next is 5D, adoption of resolution 1835, and if staff could inform us.
One of your favorite things, the gandola.
So we are recommending that you approve a resolution 18-35 for adjusting the appropriations limit to 3.3 million for this next fiscal year. We calculate it based on the increase in population and the increase in the per capita personal income, which was 3.67 in the state of California. And then the city's population increased by 0.32%. And so we take our prior year appropriations limit and increase it by those percentages. And this has no financial impact because our appropriations are below the limit.
Okay. So do we have any questions from the council?
There is a schedule, sorry, there is a schedule provided, I think I was passed out to you, that shows our appropriations below the limit.
Yeah, it seems, it seems surprising that our, oh, our, the state income went up 3.67, so we use the state's number, not Calaveras County or Angels Camp?
It's just the per capita income for the state of California. That's what everyone uses across the board.
And that applies to population. So our population's really the only driver compared to other cities.
Yeah. And so what you do is you take the bigger of the increase in population of the city versus the county. And so I think our county population decreased and so we took our cities.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, any public comment? We're fine. There's no other questions from the council.
If I may, before you do that, I'd like to mention something I mentioned at the manager's meeting this morning. We went around the table and everybody was asked to make comments. My comment was, I am seriously impressed with Emily. Good choice, very sharp young lady, learned quickly. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Emily. Good news. All right, do we have a motion for adopting?
I'll move, we adopt resolution 1835.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by three.
Vice Mayor, can I get clarification on the budget item? Just to verify, does chief have direction to send two recruits to the academy in August?
Yes.
This would bring our staffing to six POs, one chief, one school resource officer.
Well, that's part of the budget presented, right?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure.
Isn't that a chief's decision?
Yep, that's his recommendation.
Got it.
So I just wanted to make sure because his staff will move forward with that direction effective immediately.
And so next, do we do anything with correspondence? This is kind of new. Do we have anything that we?
Only if you have any questions or concerns about the information or wish to discuss the item, just general information I thought the council would be interested in.
So are there any questions or thoughts?
No.
Nope. Okay, do we have council report to start over with Scott?
No report.
Right.
No report.
No report. All right then, calendar.
Okay, tomorrow on the 24th is UWPA at 5:30. August 1st is COG at 5:30 and following that is the transit meeting. And we're back here again for council on August 7th. But I wanted to just note that August 8th, we'll be having some community workshops here at the firehouse, being with a presentation from City Gate on the organizational and budget stabilization review.
What, what time is this?
Well, I think we're going to start at 7:30 for the first one and we'll probably do two and the next one will be at 11:30.
Can you send an email or something to us, know what time it is?
Yeah, once I have it, so goodbye.
Okay. All right, anything else? I guess we're ready to adjourn, so the meeting is adjourned?
To close session.
Oh, to close session.